Administrator, when you are ready, please proceed.
Please join us in an attitude of prayer. God in heaven, thank you for this opportunity to come together and work together. May we approach our tasks with wisdom and may we approach each other with respect. Bless this meeting as commissioners deal with details and vision and may all those in attendance join together in advancing the promise and purposes of Clay County. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is our motion related to approval of this evening's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to our meeting schedule. Administrator?
Yes, the next meeting of the commission will be a work session held Wednesday, September the 7th at 3:00 PM here in the chambers.
There are no honorary resolutions this evening. There are no discussion items, nor are there any public hearings scheduled. That brings us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda?
Commissioner, I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Motion has been made to adopt the consent agenda as or approve the consent agenda as published. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First on that agenda is 2022-231. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-231 is consideration of approving a grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway and Safety Traffic Division for dedicated impaired driving enforcement by the Sheriff's Department. At the last meeting, our Sheriff's Department was here for a presentation and there were some questions by the commission and Captain Agdarian is here to add some additional information for the commission.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commission. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. I did a little bit of research because I wanted to reassure you some of the concerns you raised last week that I they were valid and I wanted to reassure you that this grant is not an opportunity that's going to go away. So Jackson County Sheriff's Office began a dedicated DWI impairment unit through this grant with MoDOT in 2006. They had one deputy. In 2007, they added an additional deputy and now, well, as of last year, they had six deputies in this DWI unit through the MoDOT grant funded at 50/50. So for 16 years now, this grant has been in place with personnel and like I told you last week, eventually this grant's going to bottom out at a 50/50 match, but it's not going to go lower than that. And initially, MoDOT had intended for this grant to go down to zero and be fully absorbed by the county, but it never came to pass. That was the intention in 2006. Here we are 16 years later and that has not happened. So the grant is available. It is not going to be funded at less than 50% based on history, but if that were to change and MoDOT says next year, look, we just can't do it, then we'll reevaluate, but no one is going to have to fear for their job, for sure. The additional information that I got from our traffic unit supervisor is that this is not just a grant situation where we apply, we get money and we go on down the road. This is an ongoing partnership between the Sheriff's Office and MoDOT, as well as some other public safety partners, where we have ongoing conversations and discussions about how to proactively use this grant opportunity for public safety. So it's not just a grant that we apply for and get every year. This is an ongoing partnership and I wanted to reassure you that as you're considering this request, it's not something that will go away and it has a long history.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
I just comment, thank you for the information. It's very helpful and sounds like a great program. Look forward to moving it forward this evening and it's good to know that it's going to hold at the 50/50, you know, match level. Obviously, that would be a big personnel increase in costs to fund for full-time positions if it fell to us. So it's good that the partnership seems like it hopefully will last indefinitely into the future and I look forward to support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, but thank you for the additional information, Captain.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on 2022-231? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve 2022-231.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2022-231. Discussion?
No discussion.
You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-232. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-232 is consideration of approving a modification to the 2021-2022 grant application per Resolution 2021-181. This is with Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for the dedicated impairment driving enforcement. As the commission may recall, we had a presentation on this last week regarding the motion that you just did approving the application. MoDOT has agreed to allow us to amend this current grant application to accept the funding for the two vehicles that would be needed for the two new officers that would be part of next year's grant. This is being done because of the lead time to order the patrol vehicles and certainly staff is here to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No questions. Thank you.
Seeing none, is there is there anyone else who is there a motion on 2022-232?
I move that we approve 2022-232.
Discussion? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to comment from the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-253. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-253 is consideration of approving a sole source vendor contract with Keystone Public Safety Incorporated for annual software maintenance by the Sheriff's Department. This was presented to you last week and staff is here if you have any additional questions.
Any questions from the commission on this issue?
No questions.
No questions.
Does anyone wish to speak on this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion on 2022-253?
I make a motion to approve 2022-253.
Motion has been made for approval of 2022-253. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to three companion issues. 2022 Ordinance 23, 2022, five, excuse me, 256 and 2022-257. Administrator?
Yes, these are three companion action items by the commission. Ordinance 23 is approval and execution of a contract with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the state block grant agreement for the runway rehabilitation project at the Midwest National Air Center Airport. The companion resolutions that follow this are Resolution 2022-256, which is consideration of an agreement with Burns and McDonald to function as project managers for this particular project. And Resolution 2022-257 is award of the construction contract with Superior, excuse me, yeah, Superior Boeum for the project. And staff presented on this last week and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions or any new information?
No questions.
No questions, no.
Is there anyone wishing to comment on these three items? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2022 Ordinance 23, 2022-256 and 2022-257?
Commissioner, I move that we approve 2022 Ordinance 23 and Resolutions 256 and 257.
Motion has been made for the approval of the three items just mentioned. Discussion? Please, you are recognized to close.
Thank you. Well, I just want to again celebrate that this is a big deal and thanks to everyone who helped make it happen. Obviously, you know, getting a multimillion dollar infrastructure development into our county and making sure our airport is, you know, as good as it can be, you know. So thank you to everybody involved and it's a good day for Clay County. And I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to 2022-258. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-258 is approving project authorization for five facility projects. And this was presented to the commission last week and the purpose of this is to express intent to proceed with the projects and the funding recommended. Each of these projects will be brought forward to the commission individually for final authorization. Staff is here to answer to questions you may have.
Thank you. And just for clarification sake, what's being sought on this and the subsequent issues we'll be taking up is a consensus from the commission that we go forward.
Correct.
Instructions to staff, essentially.
Correct.
Very good. With that, is there any discussion on 2022-258?
No questions.
No questions, no.
I think these are all projects that I think are important to proceed with and these are going to be employing ARPA funds. And if I remember from what we talked about last week, they all are very much in compliance with the ARPA regulation passed out, so there's no issue with that.
That's correct. These are with the loss revenue category, so they are all in compliance with Treasury guidelines.
Very good. With that, do we have consensus from the commission to have staff go forward with putting these into form to be taken up at a future meeting?
I'll make I'll make a motion to approve 2022-253.
Well, we're not they're not looking for approval. We're just we're just giving we're just expressing a consensus.
You would actually approve this resolution that's expressing the consensus.
Oh, okay.
It's sort of a formal action, but there is no budget, there is no authorization for actually the project. It will come back to the commission on an individual basis.
Okay, so the consensus takes the form of a vote. Very well. Motion has been made for the approval of 2022-258. Any further comments?
No, no comments other than, you know, it sounds like necessary projects and I'm glad that we're going to get to move forward on them, so.
Very well. You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
This brings us to 20, excuse me, too many twos again, 2022-258A. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-258A is approval of project authorization for a project in the prosecutor's office. This is very similar to the action that was just considered. This project was presented last week by staff. There were some questions by the commission and so this evening we have County Prosecutor Dan White here to provide additional information for the commission.
Very good.
Commissioners, real quick, I'm just going to go ahead and say that I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, so I will step out of the room for this.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening. Daniel White, Clay County Prosecuting Attorney. What I'd like to do is first, the office manager, Deanna Jacobs, is here. Does he have any questions about specifically what this is? Because what I'd like to do, if you have any questions, show them up and tell you exactly what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. And then I'd like an opportunity to begin with the history of the office and how we got to where we are now. And then Prosecutor-elect Thompson would like to address the commission about where we go from here.
Yeah, I think that'll be fine. Do you have any objections?
Well, no, I look forward to the presentation. You know, we did last week, you know, we were shown pictures of the office and obviously the additional staff to, you know, address the COVID backlog. And it's clear that some improvements need to be made and renovations over there, so but look forward to hearing any details that you all want to provide for sure. Thank you.
And I'm fine with the with the presentation. I just the I was one of the ones who raised a question about that. My question was, I wasn't sure if the employees who would be occupying these offices were in fact short-term or long-term employees. So that was that's my main point of clarification, quite honestly. Apart from that, I don't have a lot of problems, but my concern was because they were being paid out of ARPA funds to make sure that we were not doing a remodeling project for essentially employees who were temporary just to deal with the COVID backlog. So I guess just expressing that as the as the point that I need to clarification on, you know, apart from that, I don't have any problems with it. So obviously, we'd be happy to hear whatever you want to tell us, but that would be the point that I would I would like some some clarification on, so please proceed with that in mind.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. I may have missed the way you appeared to be able to access.
Oh, the mic's not on, but no, please go ahead and do what you need to do. I just noticed Commissioner Carpenter noticed your mic wasn't on to make sure that you are being heard.
Generally, I do not have a problem with saying people may not understand if they can always hear me. So the current space the prosecutor has in the Rooning Justice Center is in the basement and we've been there since 1995. So this is a copy of the blueprint for the prosecutor's office in 1995. Along the back wall, you can see these are prosecutor's offices. This is the prosecutor's office. This was a conference room and then over here was another prosecutor's office. This was adjusted when this was built to take this prosecutor's office out and make it a conference room. So we have a conference room here, prosecutor's office, secretary, victim advocate. Then we have assistant prosecutors down here and then so we had about seven or about seven prosecutor's offices in 1995 in the basement.
Just to just to orientate myself a little bit, are the elevators towards the bottom down there?
So the elevator is going to be right here.
Okay, good. That helps because that's usually where I key from when I visit your offices, I come down the elevator, so thank you.
So in 1995, this area was bad checks, all right? When I took over in 2004, we were collecting a million dollars in bad check restitution every year. That has gone away. People don't write checks anymore. So this space is all new up. So these were cures. This space is now open and available. There was a small renovation done in prosecutor's office in, I think, 2006, somewhere right around there, because what had happened is we were out of space for prosecutors. Now, what I did was I took and I wrote 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, just so we can keep track. 11, 12 is here, 13 is here, 14 is here, 15, 16, 17 and 18. So those are the offices that have a door in the prosecutor's office. Number one, over here, currently held by two investigators. Two grown men share that office. Number two, if you remember, if we looked at the 1995, that's a conference room. That was a conference room in 1995. It's now it's been my office since 2004. The actual prosecutor's office is number three. That is Deanna Jacobs, the office the office manager. That's her office. So four is an APA, Assistant Prosecutor. Five is an APA. Six is an APA. Seven is an APA. Eight, nine, 10 and 11. 11 is the chief assistant prosecuting attorney. So that back row starting fourth through 11 are all prosecutor's offices. 12 is over here. In 1995, that was listed as law clerks. Two, by the end of the month, two assistant prosecutors are going to be sharing that office. So two more, two more people doubled up in an office where we are right now. 13 was one big office back in 95 and we built a wall. We built a wall and made two offices out of that. Now, they're really small offices, but they actually have a door. You can do some work in there. You can shut the door and get some things done. You can meet with victims. So they're small, but they work. 15, right here, is child support office manager, was also an assistant prosecutor. 16 is an APA's office. 17, over here, is where deputies reside along with the evidence room. So the evidence room is here and then this is an area that deputies could use to child support. 19 is the victim advocate. Currently, APA has, APA S M has no office, APA E G has no office, APA M H has no office. So I've got two doubled up here, right here at 12, and I got two doubled up in one. And I have three here. This does not include one of the ARPA spots that you guys gave me last year. I haven't been able to fill that in. So in and I suspect that in 2023, Prosecutor Thompson is going to be able to get a grant for an additional victim advocate. So that's seven. That's seven people with. So if you take one here, because that's an office, you've got two, so that's one. Here's an office, two, that's two, three, four, five. And then the other ARPA is six and then get that victim advocate, that's seven. But seven people I do not have currently have an office for in the prosecutor's office. This is the entrance to the employee using the prosecutor's office in the basement. This is a metal kick plate that has been duct taped to the tile that's coming off of that door. This is also some tent that has come off of that door. These doors used to be heat sensitive, so in the summer, they could get really hot in that vestibule and those doors would unlock. They would just unlock, so anyone coming from the fold would have access through those doors. So we tended them in an attempt to keep that area cool and keep the building secure. This door's been broken for a while and so we have a sign on it that says, please use the other door. This is our conference room as it currently exists, the one at the end of the hall. It's also a lunchroom. Federal law mandates that people can't eat lunches at their dorm station, so they have to have a place to eat. So the only place we have for them to eat is the conference room, which makes it difficult if you're trying to meet with victims during that time frame and people are trying to eat. And not everybody eats from 12 to 1. It is tiered, so some people continue to work, all the people go to lunch and then it rotates. So that makes it very difficult. We also don't have a good place to store. This is called a mampad. This is a really important tool we have that allows us to do a whole bunch of stuff important, but we don't have a good place to store. So it goes into the conference room. This is the kitchen and lunchroom. This area right here, these this table with three chairs, that's the lunch area if we don't use the conference room for 45 people. This is the room that the investigators are in at the other end of the hall. It's really a tight space for two individuals, where we make it work. This is generally what an assistant prosecutor's office looks like. This is one of the ones where we, in 2006, when we cut it in half, this is what that office looks like. And this is another view of an assistant prosecutor's office. And these numbers up in the corner are, you can look at your copy of the PowerPoint and that will be the office associated with that number on that on that sheet. So in conclusion, I'll just say this. I feel like maybe I've done a disservice to the prosecutor's office over the past few years. Just to be frank and honest with you, this wasn't a friendly place to come. I'm sure some of you know, some of you were here, some of you know, not necessarily a friendly place to come and ask for something. In fact, people came and asked and got asked. I'm not blind, I'm not deaf. I watched what happened to other people. I was just trying to hang on to what I had to get things done for the citizens of the county. So the crisis of the prosecutor's office is not over. I probably made it worse because I didn't come up here and ask for things that I needed. And now it's gotten to a point where we really need it. Not asking for seven offices, asking for four and a new conference area and then take the existing conference room and make that lunchroom for the hardworking people at the prosecutor's office. We really did it from about every side. The commission and cities have done amazing things. I was at the EPC launching and I was amazed at all the progress that's being made on behalf of the cities in this county and on behalf of the county and the commission. Amazing things are happening, but with amazing things comes growth. And with growth, there just are going to be a requirement to do some things with the prosecutor's office that may seem out of kilter because we got by without it for a while, but I think it's 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 we don't want to be like other counties that you see on the news where specific categories of crime do not get fired. They don't get fired by the prosecutor. I think stealing somebody's car should be prosecuted. I think if you have controlled substances, and I'm not just talking about marijuana, I'm talking about other controlled substances, you shouldn't have to just have any access to a violent crime to make that a charge. But at some point, if there's not some relief with help and adequate workstation where people get things done, it's going to be difficult. Our choice will have to be made. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. If you don't have any questions, prosecutor-like office, if you have some questions you'd like to answer.
Thank you very much. Well, you're right. We had our history is not overly pleasant in a lot of ways and I'm happy that you feel free to come up here and address us. Part of the problem is, and I think you pretty much alluded to it in a very specific way, and that is, there's a lot of backlog of things of needs that were left unaddressed. And so we're going to have to work through this and try to put it back into a better working order. So I appreciate you being here and I appreciate the fact that you're giving us a good and accurate picture of what your situation is so that we can make our decisions based on that. Commissioner?
No questions, but look forward to helping you guys modernize the office situation. I'm sorry that Prosecutor White, you won't get to enjoy much of it, but I, you know, I think you're doing good work here by making sure that we give you what you need, so look forward to doing that. Thank you.
See, next person, please. Oh, and be sure and press the button so you have the green light on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zach Thompson. I am an assistant prosecutor in Clay County and I will be the next prosecuting attorney for Clay County. First, I'd like to thank the commission for allowing us to address it on this important issue. And I would also like to thank the commission for funding the sheriff's department. I know for a long time that was an issue and I think it's an important first step in demonstrating our shared commitment to public safety. The reality is that the hard work of a deputy or a police officer that results in an arrest is the beginning of a case. It marks the beginning of a process that requires time, effort and skill on the part prosecutors, prosecutor's office support staff, prosecutor's office investigators. Only by giving prosecutors, law enforcement officers and deputies the tools they need can we achieve justice for victims. The construction of these offices and the ARPA-funded prosecutor's office is an important down payment on our shared commitment for public safety. And what it means is that our employees will have a place to meet with victims, meet with witnesses, meet with police officers and just have a place to do their job. The folks who choose to work in the prosecutor's office do so because they have a commitment to public safety. They work very hard and they work very hard under an ever-increasing workload. And the reality is that despite their best efforts, the workload will eventually mean, without assistance, that they will be unable to deliver justice to victims. To be clear, we're not asking for additional space. We're just asking for help to repurpose the space we have in the most efficient way possible. possible. Our office was built in nineteen ninety-five. Since then, a hundred thousand people added to Clay County. The question before us is not whether or not Clay County's going to grow. The question is, are we going to grow the right way? We have two choices. We can renew our commitment to public safety by, by making sure officers in the prosecutor's office have the resources and the tools they need to do their job, or we can be like some other communities we unfortunately see on the news that place politics above prosecution and public safety. With that, I, I thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Uh, no, no questions, but congratulations on the upcoming role, and I, you know, have every confidence that we're going to be in good hands. And like I said, to Prosecutor White, look forward to helping you all modernize your office, and, and like you say, you know, at, at some point, you're probably going to need additional space, and I realize you're not asking for that today, which makes it a pretty modest request. But given that you're utilizing a space from nineteen ninety-five, and we've experienced tremendous growth as accounting and, you know, requiring more personnel in the prosecutor's office, I would call this a, a pretty small and reasonable ask, and look forward to working with you to make sure you have what you need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you going forward, Prosecutor-elect.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion on twenty twenty-two, two fifty-eight A?
Commissioner, I move that we approve twenty twenty-two, two five eight A.
Motion has been made for the approval of twenty twenty-two, two fifty-eight A. You're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolte?
Yes. We will pause for a moment if somebody from staff would not mind. We'll wait for Commissioner Thompson to re, rejoin us, and we'll be picking up from there.
There you go.
With that, we will go to twenty twenty-two, two fifty-nine. Administrator?
It's Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two fifty-nine is, again, can, considering approval of authorizing the intent for staff to move forward with four projects for the human resources. These do involve ARPA funding. Again, each of these projects will be brought forward individually to the commission for final authorization and approval.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff on this?
Uh, I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. Is there a motion related to twenty twenty-two, two fifty-nine?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-two dash two fifty-nine.
Motion has been made for the approval of twenty twenty-two, two fifty-nine. Any discussion?
Just, again, thank you to everybody who helped put this together. I think these are important items to make sure our employees are as, taken care of as they can be, and make sure that we do what we can to appeal to get employees in and retain them when they come. So I think these are good initiatives, and I look forward to supporting it.
Very good. You're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to twenty twenty-two, twenty-four, two forty-three A. Yep, it does.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two four three A is consideration of approving the facts and findings regarding the conditional use permit to erect a commercial wireless communication tower antenna on North Stark. This was added earlier to the commission. County Councilor Graham will present information. We are asking the commission to take action on this resolution this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Now, I might even suggest that both the, the next two items could be taken together, two four three A and two four four A. They are very similar. They're both related to the two denials of cell phone towers that came up a couple weeks ago. This kind of closes that part of it. We would typically do findings of facts, conclusions of law in these situations, and what you have in front of you reflect that.
Okay. These are, of course, as the counselor and as the administrators, mentioned related to a couple of issues that we had taken up relatively recently. Are there any questions for either the administrator or the counselor?
Not for me. No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on these two items? Seeing none, the counselor had made the recommendation that we vote on them together. Is that right, Mr. Counselor?
It certainly can be. You can divide them up, but they, they certainly make sense to do together as well.
I will leave it up to the discretion of whoever would like to make a motion on, on these items to either put them together or to do them in separate sequence, so I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve two four three and two four four A.
Motion's been made for the approval of twenty twenty-two, two forty-three A and twenty twenty-two, two forty-four A. Discussion? Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Brings us to our final issue on the regular agenda, that is twenty twenty-two, two sixty-one. Administrator?
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two six one is consideration of approval of a tolling agreement between QuickTrip Corporation and Clay County. Once again, the staff is asking for the commission to take action on this resolution this evening, and County Councilor Graham will provide information for the commission.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Again, so this is something that we did last year. It is almost identical except for dates. There's an ongoing state tax commission appeal that we have with QuickTrip, and it hasn't been resolved, and because it hasn't been resolved, we, they've agreed, or we've agreed to toll the statute of limitations, and this will keep the property off the tax sale, which we don't particularly want until we get a resolution of the tax issue. And the reason it's coming for you today for consideration is you don't meet again until September, and the tax sale is coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Right, that was the, the reason for bringing it up for immediate action, for lack of a better term.
That's correct.
Was because of the timeliness resulting on when the tax sale was on our meeting schedule. With that, are there any questions of the counselor?
No questions.
No questions.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion for twenty twenty-two, two sixty-one?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-two dash two sixty-one.
Motion's been made for the approval of twenty twenty-two, two sixty-one. You put the discussion. Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Is there anybody from the public, an office holder or an agency, who would like to comment on any items not covered on today's agenda? Seeing none, that brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have anything you'd like to say at this time?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No comments. Thank you.
One of the things that I would like to, I think, bring to the commission's attention is the, the public, the public defenders who are housed over at the Schrader Building. Presently, we are housing them, which is part of our responsibility, but also included in that are attorneys who are working in Platt County, in Ray County, and I believe there might be another county, perhaps Clinton County.
I think it's Clinton, actually.
And we are not, there was some thought that we might get some, some funding from one of those counties that has not materialized, I believe Ray. So at this moment, we are covering the expenses for four counties, three and ourselves. The reason I bring it up, and, and that there may be some timely and small, apart from one of the things we discussed, which is the, the difficulty we have in making sure that we have enough space for our own functions, is in my discussions with some of the commissioners in Platt County, they are currently going through a reorganization of their, of their space over there and reassigning it. When I spoke to them, I believe earlier this year, perhaps it was late last year, they indicated that they indeed had space that they could provide to, to house some of those public defenders. They also indicated that they would not be willing to, to pay any, anything towards our overhead related to that. So that strikes me as an opportunity we have to, at least if we cannot get some funding to, to offset our own expenses, at least Platt County at that time was willing to, to provide office space, and I believe there may have been some discussions between Platt County and the, the public, the public defender's office. I was not privy to those, so I could not tell you the content. I think we need to be looking at how we address that situation. I think going on like this, while it's not a crisis, is something that we will be missing an opportunity to actually come to some resolution once Platt County, who has about a third or a quarter of the workload that's being generated, once they have reassigned that office space. My guess is that the excess space that they were wanting to provide to the public, the public defenders is not going to be available, so it is something that I think we might keep in mind, whether we discuss it at a subsequent meeting, I think is up to the body, but I didn't want to bring it to the attention of the commission so that we can give it proper consideration while it's still a timely issue. And that concludes my comments. That brings us to approval of the minutes of previous sessions. We have two copies of minutes to consider. One is Wednesday, May eighteen, twenty twenty-two, three P M, and the other is Wednesday, May twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, six P M. Is there a motion related to the minutes of previous sessions?
I'll make a motion to approve the May eighteenth at three P M and the Wednesday, May twenty-fifth at six P M meeting minutes as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the minutes of Wednesday, May eighteen, twenty twenty-two, three P M, and Wednesday, May twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, six P M. Discussion?
No discussion.
You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to written reports. Are there any written reports to come to the commission today?
No, thank you.
No written reports. There are no executive sessions listed today, therefore, we are adjourned. Thank you.